Seven o'clock PM, Monday, July 2nd. Start of a new month, a new fiscal year, 2018. Mike, have a roll call, please.
Bergen.
Here.
Drinkow.
Here.
Hengus.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Rothy.
Here.
Chair.
Here.
And Walt Stein is absent.
Yes. Thank you. If you would all rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion about the agenda? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion, agenda approved, six to one, or six to zero, one absent. Our guest council person is not here.
I'm living in hope that she'll show up, but if she doesn't, we'll have to introduce her the next time.
All right, very good, thank you, Mike. Moving on, public comments for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience? Leave, there is.
I'm just gonna have my hand around some booklets. This is for Waverly Heritage Days. My name is Jess Hamilton. For those of you that don't know me, I am one of the co-chairs on Waverly Heritage Days. We would like to just present to you the pamphlets that we have just come out with this for this year's Heritage Days. We have our Hall of Fame recipients, which is the Leisure Services here in Waverly, as well as Classic Cleaners, which we've kind of seen as coming down at this point in time. Our Grand Marshal will be Sue Van Hemmer this year. She's, works at the library. So, we're very, very excited to have those three within our Hall of Fame. Our Hall of Fame takes place at seven o'clock on Friday night, if anybody there would care to join. We'll have refreshments. And Bob Brunkhorst, I believe, will be speaking in regards to those recipients. We want to first thank the council and the city of Waverly for their donation and all the support that we've had this year and in previous years. In regards to Waverly Heritage Days, we feel like the support from Ann this year, Ann Rothy, has been amazing. And it's been a number of years since we've had someone on the council that has been just there for us, does whatever we need. I mean, it's been amazing, so thank you very much for that. We really appreciate it. This year, in regards to the booklet, we are adding a couple new activities. We have a princess party, which our VIP has been sold out for well over a month already. So, if anybody really likes princesses, come join us. We have a lot of little girls and boys. And our open princess party will be from four to six. So, that's one of our activities for Friday night. We have a couple new bands this year. We're kind of changing it up a little bit. We have a couple country bands. Brad Morgan will play on Saturday night, and Liz Morando will play on Friday night. So, we will also have Vic back, and they play Friday night, as well as some 50s music with, oh my goodness, Richie Lee and the Fabulous 50s. Sorry, drew blank. And then on Saturday, we have Floyd Junker, our bluegrass band, and Slemons Run, who kind of filled in last minute for us last year. They were at our talent show, which we will have again this year. But they are filling in on Saturday, as well as the Pork Tornadoes are new this year. And they have drawn a very large crowd wherever they've gone in the Midwest. It seems, so we're really hoping that we'll draw that crowd to Waverly weather pending. We also have more food vendors than we've had in the past. We have eight coming this year. I think last year, we only had three or four. So, that's growing as well. Other than that, we hope that you all will come out and enjoy yourselves that weekend. Have a good time. We have our, the last thing I wanted to mention, we have a parade. And Mayor So Ash has agreed to write in a convertible during the parade. So, everybody come watch the parade, so you can see him. Wave at him. So, that'll also be a first for us in quite a while. So, we really, really need to thank the council and the city, because we could not do it without you. If anyone wants to volunteer, you're welcome to. We need lots of help, lots of hands on deck. So, you can do that through our Facebook page. You can send us an email at waverlyheritagedays@gmail.com. You can get ahold of my phone number. It's on our website. So, any questions?
I'm probably suffering from a moment of temporary blindness here, but is the Grand Marshal listed in the booklet somewhere?
I believe it is. I haven't actually looked super thoroughly at our booklet, but I'm pretty sure the Hall of Fame recipients and the Grand Marshal are in there. Maybe.
I see Hall of Fame is...
I see the Hall of Fame. Maybe it's not.
I was looking at the parade, thought maybe it would be there.
It's not, it doesn't look like, but it will be in the paper.
So, once again, who is that?
Sue Van Hemmer. She's a Waverly Public Library worker. She's done the children's program since I was a little kid.
I actually thought her last name was The Librarian.
I've always known her as Miss Sue.
Sue the Librarian.
That's what the kids all say.
Well, I just want to say how impressed I am with this committee. I mean, I'm guilty of being one of those people who shows up at Heritage Days and never volunteered before, but there is a core group of about a dozen people that work hard all year round to put this together and just really fly under the radar. So, I'm very impressed with the group. They work hard. And I think it'll be fun there. They're really trying to make a lot of family-oriented events. And we have great sponsorship. And couldn't do it without the Public Works and the Leisure Services employees, who really work hard to put it all together.
No, we couldn't, so we appreciate them.
Very good. Any other comments for Sue, or for Jill? I'm sorry. I'm trying to think through Mike's comments there. But no, we'll look forward to the events, Friday, Saturday, and a little bit on Sunday. And hope the weather cooperates big time.
Well, thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon on a single voice vote motion without separate discussion, unless someone from the council or public requests a specific item be considered separately. Number one, pay request from McClure Engineering Company for the Waverly Municipal Airport Vault Hangar Improvements 2017 for $1,300. Pay request from McClure Engineering Company for the Waverly Municipal Airport Vault Hangar Improvements 2017, $475. Pay request from Kramer &amp; Associates Incorporated for the Cedar River Parkway East Improvements 2018, Pay request from Kramer &amp; Associates Incorporated for the Cedar River Parkway East Improvements 2018 Pay request from WHKS &amp; Company for the WPC Facility Improvements 2020 for $63,138.35. Approve the purchase of a 2015 Chevrolet Silverado truck for Leisure Services Department from Waverly Utilities of Waverly, Iowa for $19,500. And I believe that's for the new vegetation management personnel. Class C liquor license for Walgreens Store #12,148. Class C beer permit for Quickstar #286. Class B beer permit for Waverly Heritage Days. Class C liquor license for Sasquatch Jack's IDaway Bar Room and Grill. Entertain a motion.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second?
A second.
Any council discussion on any of these items?
I don't recall ever having those really large pay requests on the consent calendar before. I mean, it's just a simple pay request, but it's, I just seem to think that we've always done those, the big ones.
I think since we said that it's part of the budget and everything, budgeted items were going to be on the consent agenda, that was mine and both of our understanding.
It just seems...
Which is maybe why it changed, for what you remember.
We haven't hit a lot of $11 million project, things that generate these kind of bills either coming in. It's a rarity, you're gonna see a million dollars spent in a single project at a council meeting, too.
Maybe it's because some of them come in with pay requests with change orders, and so we've had to approve the change.
That would be the case, change orders for sure.
A lot of them, too, are final payments to finalize the project. So, that requires a resolution.
I'll just recollect something.
Very good. Any other questions, discussion?
Question about the Chevrolet Silverado. Is it unusual for us to be selling a vehicle from one department to another department within the city? I guess I've never noticed that before.
Well, Waverly Utilities really isn't that kind of a department, since it's their own entity, their own board, they have their own code, their own autonomy, so to speak. We're basically purchasing the vehicle we'd been using the entire time before they, we sent the billing over there. It's part of that use for that pickup was for the billing duties itself. So, we were looking to invest in a truck for next year. This one has hardly any miles on it. It's a little reduced price because of the age, so it was a better deal for us financially to be able to acquire this one that we knew the history of versus trying to go and get another one, a new one. So, it is rare, it's not uncommon that we do this, but they are kind of a separate entity altogether. That's why it kind of came about that way.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor of the consent calendar say yes.
Yes.
No? Approve, six, zero, one, absent. Regular business item number 1H. Resolution Appointing Paying Agent, Bond Registrar, and Transfer Agent, Approving the Paying Agent and Bond Registrar and Transfer Agent Agreement and Authorizing the Execution of the Agreement. This has to do with the bond sales that we just approved two weeks ago, if I recollect right.
Yes, sir. This is kind of finalizing that paperwork for the individuals and organizations that are gonna help facilitate this bond for its lifetime.
Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 18-96. A Resolution Appointing Paying Agent, Bond Registrar and Transfer Agent, Approving the Paying Agent and Bond Register and Transfer Agent Agreement and Authorizing the Execution of the Agreement.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothy.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Motion carried, six, zero, one, absent. Part two of that, approving Resolution 1897, a resolution amending the resolution, authorizing and providing for the issuance and levying a tax to pay the bonds. Approval of the Tax Exemption Certificate and Continuing Disclosure Certificate. Entertain a motion.
I'll move Resolution 1897. A Resolution Amending Resolution, Authorizing the Issuance of $11 Million General Obligation Capital Loan Notes Series 2018A and Levying a Tax for the Payment Thereof, Passed and Approved on March 19th, 2018, by Substituting a New Resolution Therefore, Approving and Authorizing the Issuance of the Bonds and Levying a Tax for the Payment Thereof, and Approving the Tax Exemption Certificate and Continuing Disclosure Certificate.
Second. Motion made, second. Council discussion.
If I interrupt, sir. That should read General Obligation Bonds. That was a correction that was not accounted for on this, instead of capital loan notes. It was just an oversight on the bond attorneys when they sent this, a prior template. That should be General Obligation Bonds. Thank you, sir.
Very good.
Do we need to amend the...
I would prefer it to read that way, if you would, please.
Okay. So, I will amend how it's written. Resolution 1897. Resolution Amending Resolution, Authorizing the Issuance of $11 Million... Say that.
General Obligation.
General Obligation Bonds. Series 2018A and Levying a Tax for the Payment Thereof, Passed and Approved on March 19th, 2018, by Substituting a New Resolution Therefore, Approving and Authorizing the Issuance of the Bonds and Levying a Tax for the Payment Thereof, and Approving the Tax Exemption Certificate and Continuing Disclosure Certificate.
Second again. Second amended resolution. Okay, any further...
This is what happens when you cut and paste.
We had that discussion. They were extremely sorry about it, but it didn't get it fixed for us, so...
Any other council discussion, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothy.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Motion carried. Six, zero, one, absent. Item number three, Approving Resolution 1898. Resolution Appointing Paying Agent, Bond Registrar, and Transfer Agent, Approving the Paying Agent and Bond Register and Transfer Agent Agreement and Authorizing the Execution of the Agreement. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 18-98. A Resolution Appointing Bankers Trust Company of Des Moines, Iowa to Service Paying Agent, Bond Registrar and Transfer Agent, Approving the Paying Agent and Bond Register and Transfer Agent Agreement and Authorizing the Execution of the Agreement.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothy.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Motion carried, six, zero, one, absent. Approving Resolution 1899. A Resolution Authorizing the Issuance, Approving the Continuing Disclosure Certificate and Approving the Tax Exemption Certificate. Entertain a motion, please.
I'll move approval of Resolution 1899. A Resolution Authorizing and Providing for the Issuance and Securing the Payment of $1,655,000 Water Revenue Bonds, Series 2018B of the City of Waverly, State of Iowa, under the Provisions of the City Code of Iowa, and Providing for a Method of Payment of the Bonds, Approving the Continuing Disclosure Certificate and Approving the Tax Exemption Certificate.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothy.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
Motion carried, six, zero, one, absent. Item number five, Approving Resolution 18-100. Resolution Establishing Fair Market Value and Authorizing Eminent Domain for the Acquisition of Interest in Certain Real Property for the 20th Street Northwest Phase 1A Railroad Crossing Road Improvement Project. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 18-100 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. Assuming this is just to help with the timeline that we're up against?
We're just trying to move forward with it. It took the appraisal a little bit longer than we thought. And so, and I've had lots of discussions early on with her, so we'll just get it back to her now, and I'll mail it to her tomorrow, and we'll proceed from there.
Is there expectation that we'll have to go through the process of eminent domain? Or do we think we're gonna reach a deal ahead of time?
I don't know, because there was some thought to saying that you don't have the right to do it. But I think it's more about maybe getting the appraisal done. So, hopefully, we'll have some good discussions after this. And we'll probably, that's a really small piece, but we have another piece for next year, either next year or the year after that project. And so, we'll probably offer the same amount per square foot or the rest of it, and try to do it all at once, and see if we can make that...
Okay, so that's why it's just a little tiny bit, but then the rest of the strip is gonna be in the next phase.
And it'll be, it would be valued the same way.
Right.
So, it won't change much from year to year. So, hopefully, we can use that appraisal to buy it all that we need. And we don't, we're not buying anything in front of the two houses, by the way, on 20th.
I just thought it was odd that there was just this one little corner of the...
Any other questions, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Rothy.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Motion carried, six, zero, one, absent. Resolution 18-101. A Resolution Approving the Bid from Boland Recreation of Marshalltown, Iowa for the Purchase and Installation of Port-in-Place Safety Surfacing for Coleman Parks Play Unit and Swings. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 18-101. A Resolution Approving the Bid of $49,750 from Boland Recreation of Marshalltown, Iowa for the Purchase and Installation of Port-in-Place Safety Surfacing for Coleman Parks Play Unit and Swings.
Second.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. Tab, do you have some input? Do you like to do on this?
I think it's explained in the agenda memo.
Okay, very good.
I'm surprised that we put out, like, was it five bidders, but only two bids?
Yeah, I was a little surprised with that, too, because I thought we'd have at least maybe four. But we only had two. This was a good price. But I talked to the others, and they just decided that they weren't, they didn't want to go through the hoops at this point.
I would say also, Mayor, I think I want to commend Tab and his staff. When you look at the grant and the funding awarded, this is not just straight tax dollars. And the public should be aware, you're looking at money from the community foundation, Northeast Iowa, from the Guernsey Foundation, the Gaming Association, the McElroy Foundation. They truly go after every possible means of financing versus just straight taxing for it, and we're done. And so, it's not an easy thing to do. It's time-consuming. And every project like this has this kind of a constant look for additional funding, so we don't have to leverage our tax dollars that way.
Glad you pointed that out. That was the first thing I noticed as I read through there, that the grants are paying for the majority of the project.
Absolutely.
This company is also the ones that did Southeast School and West Cedar. And I think Kerry's been done, too. I can't remember.
Very good. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothy.
Yes.
Motion carried, six, zero, one, absent. Approving Resolution 18-102. A Resolution Approving the Bid from JD Builders of Waverly, Iowa for the Installation of Roofing Materials on the south side of the Turf Care Center's Roof. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 18-102. A Resolution Approving the Bid of $7,830 from JD Builders of Waverly, Iowa for the Installation of Roofing Materials on the south side of the Turf Care Center's Roof.
Second.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion.
So, has there been any word from the hospital about this property? It's been in limbo, it seems like, for a while.
We're still limbo, but there is interest in the property. But we don't know what the timeline is. And if you saw the picture, or if you were driven by, the roof is leaking, and we need to do something about it, at least on the south side.
I would assume, Tab, this really isn't a permanent solution if we were going to...
Stay in there forever?
Stay in there forever.
We would've done both sides.
Now, we had three bids, but, so normally, when we get multiple bids, we have a list of all the bids. In this case, we just didn't include it?
These are basically quotes.
Okay.
So, we just gave you the little quote.
That'll be a steel roof, is that correct?
It will. So, we'll have shingles on one side and steel on the other. We won't be able to see either side.
Very good.
It's just one of those necessary things we've been putting off and putting off, because a lot of it also depends on when Memorial Park will be free, so we can look at the building of the other buildings. And again, it's a big ripple effect. We just can't throw the stone in the water yet to get it rolling, so...
Very good. Any other discussion? That's the only question I have, is even if we have an optimistic timeline, a lot of that, the couple of years off, is the other half gonna last another couple of years?
It's not in that bad a shape. It's mostly covered by trees and shade, so it hasn't had the sun, the beating that this side has. And we haven't noticed the leaks in there nearly as much. When you look at the equipment we have in there, that's really the reason we're patching it. We probably could've let it go longer, but we just don't want to have any issue with the equipment that's being stored. But we talked about doing the entire thing. But again, in an effort to maybe not spend more than we had to, with hope that in a year or two, it will be taken care of, we decided to look at the one side only. If it continues on to get worse, we can certainly do the other side as well. It's just, it's one of those necessaries you have to do that you don't like to necessarily do. But that's kind of where we are.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothy.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Motion carried, six, zero, one, absent. Item number eight, approving resolution eighteen dash one oh three, a resolution accepting the Waverly Municipal Airport Hangar Insulation Improvements Project as complete and approving change order number one and pay estimate number four as final pay request to Modern Builders of Janesville, Iowa. Entertain a motion, please.
I'll move approval of resolution eighteen dash one oh three, resolution accepting the Waverly Municipal Airport Hangar Insulation Improvements Project as complete and approving change order number one of three thousand four hundred sixty dollars and pay estimate number four as final pay request in the amount of eight thousand twenty-four dollars to Modern Builders of Janesville, Iowa.
Second? Motion made in second. Council discussion.
How did it look? Does it look good and finished and wonderful and ready to use?
Yes, it looks very good.
Just in time.
It's got a mirror on it, I guess, but it's not really...
It's not flaking off anymore, so.
Yeah, just in time, so it doesn't flake off on your pancakes.
There you go. It's not powdered sugar, you know?
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero one absent. Item number nine, approving resolution eighteen dash one oh four, a resolution accepting the downtown alley reconstruction two thousand eighteen project as complete and approving pay estimate number two as final pay request to Barry Smith Grading and Excavating of Waverly, Iowa. Motion, please.
Move resolution eighteen dash one oh four, a resolution accepting the downtown alley reconstruction two thousand eighteen project as complete and approving pay estimate number two as final pay request in the amount of two thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents to Barry Smith Grading and Excavating of Waverly, Iowa.
Second?
Motion made in second. Council discussion.
So it's not really complete technically, because there was a fuel tank under there somewhere, so it's sort of complete till the fuel tank's taken out?
It's complete enough.
It's absolutely wonderful.
I was going to say, is it good, sir, or is it nice? Is it...
Where was the fuel tank? Or where is it?
Back of Austin Interiors, but...
It's in the ground under a huge walnut tree, so that's kind of the logistical issue we're trying to get through and figure out we're going to do with it, but...
If you want to visit the site, you can walk down the alley. It's buried under a pile of gravel, so you see the pile of gravel.
What was there?
Just, it was part of...
We're still working through that part of it, size, what we're going to do. It's complicated.
Historical preservation commission.
I think we're going to want to preserve it. It might be embalming that tree, maybe, but I don't think it's something we want to preserve, so it's complicated.
I just meant to get to the bottom of how it turned up there.
It's solvable, it's just complicated.
It's amazing, as you go digging around in the older parts of town, what kind of stuff you find that's been buried down there.
Yeah, I presume it's empty?
We hope.
We don't know.
A big lock on it, and we're just letting it ride for a little while. We're going to figure it out soon, but for now...
Do we have the keys to the lock?
We do not.
Lot of soil going from Bremer Avenue out west of town. Maybe they could just drive through and dump a couple of loads in it.
Probably wouldn't hurt. It's something that's on our radar. We just want to get the alley done quickly first for the traffic, the construction, but eventually we will tackle that issue. It's just, it's just a lot of unknown, so, so far, so good. The tree seems okay. I don't know. We'll, we'll get it figured out.
Any other questions, discussion?
I hope not, sir.
Roll call vote, please.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero one absent. Item number ten, approving resolution eighteen dash one oh five, a resolution approving the employee services sharing agreement between the Waverly-Shelrock Community School District and the City of Waverly for Human Resources Management Services. Entertain a motion, please.
I will move approval of resolution eighteen oh five, a resolution approving the employee services sharing agreement between the Waverly-Shelrock Community School District and the City of Waverly for Human Resources Management Services.
A second?
Motion made in second. Entertain, it's council discussion.
Well, we should let the minutes reflect that. Councilman Bergen really meant eighteen dash one oh five.
What number did I read?
Oh, five.
Oh, five.
Oh, one oh. Okay, one oh five instead of one hundred five?
You said oh five.
Oh, he just said oh five.
He dropped the hundred out.
I dropped the hundred out, okay.
Thought I heard it.
Okay. Council discussion, questions?
I want to say that I think this is a very creative approach to staffing, and it looks like some significant, what should I say? Negotiation must have gone on between the city and the, and the school, school district. I guess my question is, should we anticipate any challenges with a shared position like this? How do we decide when the school district's gotten their forty percent?
Well, we're going to look at trying to do two days there, three days here to start with. There may be times when they'll need a little more assistance, you know, when school starts, things like that, or we get to our year end. We'll have those pockets where we truly feel it's going to come out in the end about a sixty-forty split, sixty city, forty school. You know, I asked initially, we started looking at this project, how much time would they need, and forty percent was the number thrown out. It seemed a little low to me, but if it works, that's great for us. So we have an individual, an offer's been extended to, we're just waiting for confirmation and then before it becomes public, et cetera. But, so yeah, we had forty applications. We pared that down to a dozen, got that down to a bit more. Ed, Jennifer and I sat down, interviewed four of that group with another four ready if need be, and so we do have an exceptional individual we're hoping to bring on. Again, we're just waiting for confirmation, and with the holiday, it makes it a little tougher, too, this week, but we will know for sure midweek whether we are or not, and then we'll be able to publicly put that out there. But I mean, working with the school has been actually very easy. They have a good understanding of what they want, we have an understanding of what our need will be, and we're just going to kind of see how it goes and try to ebb and flow together as best we can. But going forward, you know, it's going to be a three-year contract. I think they have some funding to help offset their cost for five years, unless the legislature turns it, which year-to-year, we don't know. So we'll see what the first three years look like and see how it works and adjust.
And just to remind me, human resources has to do with hiring and firing or relationships between employees, or what exactly is...
Job descriptions, benefit administration, hiring, interviewing, it's a whole wide field that we've kind of been using some services with Excel Group through phone calls to people. We've not really ever had a specific individual for HR in a school, has neither. So it's going to be a good step forward for us. We're both kind of walking through it and seeing how it's going to work.
Just out of curiosity, did the candidates have any qualms about working at two different facilities?
I think they were kind of actually excited by it. It's the challenge of it, the difference of something. I don't know if this has occurred anywhere else. I know schools share superintendents and cities can sometimes share staff, but I don't know if there has ever been a crossover between school and city like this. Maybe there's a reason it doesn't happen. We're going to find out.
We're about to find out.
We're blazing a trail. We'll see how good a trail it is, but I think it's going to go very well, though. Everybody seems very cooperative, and all the individuals interviewed are very excited about the possibility of what it could be, so I think it's encouraging. I really do.
And when would they start, James?
Uh, we're still working that out.
Oh, okay.
So sometime in July, probably the end of the month, I would say.
The summer?
Yeah, absolutely. We're hoping by August, for sure.
Neither the city or the school district have had an HR position up until now. Is that fair to say?
Not a formal person designated just for HR. It's usually been someone with similar duties, or we do it kind of by committee here, multiple individuals with multiple pieces of it. But as much as it's regulated, legislative changes that are occurring and the way benefits are being done, the next topic, you'll get a good sample of that as well, I can speak to that also, it's good to have someone focused on that area alone. I think it's necessary, especially as the size that we're getting. School's much bigger than we are from a personnel standpoint, so I look forward to it. I think it's going to be exciting, yet it's going to be a little scary, too, because we're not sure exactly how this is going to work out.
Looking through the agreement, it's laid out fairly well as far as how the cost is being shared, that type of thing. Only question I have is when it came to the workman's comp, where the city's carrying a hundred percent of that, has that been reviewed by someone with workman's comp and...
We've figured it's our employee, and if there are issues or if there was a termination or anything, that would be really ours to handle. You know, we kind of brought this forward to them, so it's kind of our initial pitch. I don't know if you have any comment, Bill, that you want to add to it.
My question was more, they're spending their forty percent of time at school, slip fall, have a workman's comp claim. Are there going to be issues that it happened on their property, under their direction?
This happens fairly frequently in the fact that you have somebody that's a borrowed employee, and you have the primary employer that is us, the city, and if they, they usually want to take care of that with a compensation that's being paid, because we're assuming the risk and we're taking care of the, I mean, work comp is like a no-fault type of thing, so it's one of those situations where it's worked for others. I mean, I think that's the only way you can do it. Otherwise, you're trying to divide between and it doesn't work. It's really our employee that they borrow for their time period.
Okay. Questions, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Angus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero one absent. Item number eleven, approving resolution eighteen dash one oh six, a resolution approving a professional services agreement with PDCM Insurance of Cedar Falls, Iowa for health insurance and benefit consulting services. Motion, please.
I will move approval of resolution eighteen dash one oh six, a resolution approving a professional services agreement with PDCM Insurance of Cedar Falls, Iowa for health insurance and benefits consulting services for a three-year annual fee of twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Second?
Motion made in second. Council discussion. I have some representatives from PDCM Insurance here. Do you have some words of wisdom you'd like to impart to us?
First, thank you for choosing to do business with, with PDCM. Mainly, we're here just to answer questions if you were to have any questions this evening. We look forward to working with the city. We think there's a tremendous amount of opportunity to find some cost savings within your current program, but also with an eye on long-term, being able to add some of the wellness initiatives that we're able to support to hopefully improve the health and happiness of the population and in turn have more competitive overall benefits cost. So thank you.
Could you please state your name?
John Monahan.
Thank you.
Any other questions, input?
I'll just say that we sent this RFP out a little while ago. We sent it to nine firms. We had seven proposals come back. I led a very good discussion with Councilman Drinkow about it, having the knowledge he has in the industry, and helped us kind of shape what we were looking for going into it, and we were able to whittle it down to four proposals that we interviewed, and in the end, it was very clear. Tab, Jennifer, myself, Troy from the Police Department, Dee from the Engineering Office were part of that group, so we had a good cross-section of the city, and it was very clear that PDCM was the company we wanted to go forward with. And, you know, in the end, we're just very hopeful that we can see some good improvement. We'll be with our current plan until next spring. That is the opportunity for us to exit the group that we're in if we choose to do so. In the meantime, we'll have a lot of information that we'll be providing to them to do a lot of analysis on what we have, what we do not have, where can we be better. I'd like to definitely get a little more control of our plan versus what we have now, but we'll see if it's our best interest to do that going forward, and that's why I look forward to having them come in and get a fresh look at that.
So what was it about this group that everybody liked?
Um, I've got two here as well. I don't want to take the entire mic, so I'll let them speak on this also.
They had a lot of knowledge about what we wanted. They answered our questions great, and I'll have to give it to Liz. She sealed it for me in her last comment.
Something about speeding tickets, I guess. I'm not sure what that really meant, but, oh, you should probably look into that, make sure she gets out of town okay. Fair enough, that's probably better. I think the wellness aspect was probably one of the bigger things that they really put forward that a lot of the others didn't, and I know it's not a proven methodology, so to speak, but I do think there's a lot of common sense to some of the things if you do, like, for example, if you've stopped smoking, you'll be healthier. It's a lot of those things that seem to simply go undiscussed by some of the other groups that we talked about, and it seems like something we should pursue, the smaller, simpler things, which we overstep sometimes, looking for the big, what's this going to be, but it's the littler things that build into that. And so I think it was just the presentation, the answers, and this is very clear and it was easy to understand, and overall, you just had a good belief that this is going to work well.
And just so I'm clear, this is to help us design the plan, and then we'll go out and look for providers to meet what we want the plan to be?
If need be, yes. We're trying to figure out what do we want as a staff, employees and council to offer if we don't have it, or things we're offering we don't, maybe don't need as much of. It's really taking a hard look at everything that we have and what the employees looking for, what they're not. Again, our current plan, we're in a group of three thousand individuals out of Harlan, Pala, there's a bunch of them in there, and we get a plan, and that's our plan. We really can't offer some of the other alternatives that we'd like to to other, you know, employees or different options that don't exist, or you're just, that's your plan. And so we just want to have a little more control. There may take some steps going forward to do that. You know, self-funding is not something you just fall into. It's going to take a little work to see how we can get there, but in the end, I think it's very beneficial, if we learn anything from this process, that a lot of places will tell you that self-funding is the way you will control and get the bang for the buck, so to speak. You self-regulate what you're doing versus you're at the mercy of other groups and you have a vote, but that's it. You really don't have the majority able to control your, your plan, your support, what you're going to offer.
Again, I think it's well worth the time and effort, but it seemed like we went the way we, to the approach we're taking now, because we were a small fish in a big pond and we wanted to get in a group.
Right.
To help leverage some of the benefits of being, have pricing on a larger group, those type of things. Again, I'm sure the industry changes and it's time to look at it.
And it may be beneficial for us to stay in that group. That's one of the other options we'll have. It comes down to, are we offsetting other people's claims? Are they doing that for us? I think when we went into the group at the time, we were looking at a thirty percent increase in our health insurance. Should we have gone in or not? It's hard to say. Could you have negated some of that without going in the group as well and rode that out and had maybe better claims going forward than what the group itself was producing? And I don't know if that was the analysis done or not, it was before I got here, but that's what I like about PDCM and the things that they will do is truly give us those options and that analysis, and no offense to their incumbent, I never really felt that we got that kind of input or say. And so I wanted to see a lot of that when I first got here, and it just wasn't there. So knowing them from the past and having worked them a little bit, I think it's going to be a very good partnership, and I think we'll have a lot of information that we've not had before and choices that we've not seen, and at a minimum, we stay where we are. Worst case, we ride this out and continue on. Best case, maybe there's some opportunities to do some things that help us control our costs as an individual entity instead of relying on other groups to offset it, but that's to be seen, and that's why we look forward to having them come in and really analyze this a great deal.
I would just like to add my two cents worth in here. I think that it's a great step the city is taking to take a look at what's out there, because there are all kinds of, of new ways to look at providing benefits that we have not looked at in the past, and I think that having a group like PDCM come in and help us to take a look at those options and decide just what we want to do and where we want to be, such things as wellness, that go hand in hand with reducing some of your costs if you're going to self-fund. You want to have a wellness program, because the healthier your employees are, the less it's going to cost you to self-fund, but all of those things come together in a benefit plan, and having a group like PDCM help to develop that benefit plan, I think is going to be really beneficial to the city. Doesn't necessarily mean that, as James said, that we would be changing what we're doing, but we can certainly take a look and see if there's something that we might be doing that would be better, and the time to do that is now, because if we wait too long, then we're not going to be able to make that change, which we would have to do, you know, before next spring to be able to get out of that contract. I purposely try not to join in the conversation here, because this is an area that I do have a little bit of expertise in, but I think that this is something that is very, it will be beneficial for the city to take a look at this.
So one question I have, if we have a three-year agreement with them and we decide, you decide in the spring to stay with the current plan, will they continue to then offer consultation going forward, or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Because we stay with that plan. There was some discrepancy, too, even when we did some of the other interviews, that we can have multiple plans with this group, which we were told we couldn't, and there was just a lot of gray area that we were not really getting a clear answer on. That's the other thing I look forward to them finalizing, is what is and is not the limits of what we can do, even to where we sit today. And so, no, we'll absolutely move forward consulting, because each year, you're going to take another look at what are we doing? You know, one of the comments, I think, that sold me when we were talking about this with PDCM, was like Liz made, is that we should be telling them no throughout the year on things we don't want to do or other things that they bring up to us over and over, other options, other things to interest us in looking into, and we should be saying no off and on. It's not something that fits for us, or not yet, or things like that, and we really don't have those kind of communication discussions with our current provider, or former provider, depending on your book. But that's what we look forward to, is having that kind of continual dialogue that we just didn't have. I think we get that familiarity to the employees and let them take more ownership of this if we can change this plan some. I think that'll help going forward as well. And so that's why I think we had a really good group that looked at it and very thorough, very good feedback, especially from Troy and Dee and Tab and Jennifer. It was very solid and I was very happy with the outcome.
I think it's nice having someone work with you that's not trying to sell you something.
Yes.
I mean, there are two lines of thought on that. I don't want to disparage those people who sell things for a living because that's also important. But I think the situation that we're in right now in the city, it's nice to have an expert look over our shoulder and say, yes, we think this is good, or no, we think there are some other things that can be done. And looking at the program that we currently have is really just one of the pieces of what you would have as an employee benefit plan. It provides one area of service for an employee benefit plan, but I think what we're, what James is looking at doing with this contract is really looking at our entire employee benefit plan and not just one piece of how do we deliver the health insurance part of it. It's possible that, you know, we might continue with the health insurance part the way that we're doing it now, but have other pieces that we can add on to it or do differently. So, you know, that's just one part of the whole universe of what can be done out there.
Well, the timing will be nice with the new human resources person.
Absolutely.
Another discussion, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Motion carried six zero, one absent. Thank you, John, and everyone for your participation, and we look forward to working with you. If you get out of hand, we'll call Mack and get things straightened out. Moving on, resolution, approving resolution 18107, resolution setting a public hearing date on the approval of an amendment to the Centennial Oaks Plan Development to create parcel RR for R1 residential purposes, an amendment to the future land use map and approving plat for parcel RR. Entain a motion.
I will move approval of resolution 18107, a resolution setting a public hearing on the approval of an amendment to the Centennial Oaks Plan Development to create parcel RR for R1 residential purposes out of Outlot P of Centennial Oaks Golf Club addition for July 16, 2018 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall.
Second.
Motion made second. Council discussion.
So this is. Question about the, so the original, I had a question about what is a planned development district? And was this originally supposed to be green space? And now they're requesting permission to build a single-family dwelling on it?
So, just to go back, a planned development is usually a large 10 acres or more area where you've done a mixture of zonings. So you don't have to do separate areas for separate things, such as a golf course development where you have a combination of the commercial golf course and the residential properties surrounding it and the clubhouse, which is a kind of a retail place, and all those things are added together. So when you have to, when you do a planned development, it's, you're not doing a true zoning change. You're actually asking for a change of use, which is kind of a different situation. It's like what we did when we did the driving, the driving range, to change the use of that. It is shown on the future land use plan as semi-public, which I'm not sure what that meant. I didn't get anybody to explain that to me, and I don't think Ben understood or knew that either because it was with the other things like Brenwood and LSI, or LSI and the hospital and schools weren't quite sure what to call it. So what, the way this works is, it's not like a true rezoning that takes three readings. So you'd have a chance to get interested in it at the beginning, set it for public hearing in the second reading, and then make the final decision on the third reading. It's all in one. So we only need one hearing and one consideration by the council. So to be fair, the applicant and those people that were kind of opposed to it both asked if they needed to be here, and I said, I told them both no. So if they're not here, it's because I said that they didn't need to be just to accept the public hearing. So they'll be here for full discussions in two weeks regarding the matter.
Other questions, discussion?
Didn't pass planning and zoning, but the petitioner is still bringing it forward, hoping for us to approve it.
And requires a supermajority. Yes.
I have one question. The planning and zoning minutes that were in with our agenda included their first vote on this, but my understanding is that they took it up for reconsideration and voted again and again voted it down. Will we have those minutes before the next vote on this?
Yeah, I'll make sure you do.
Okay.
Yep.
Kind of confused a little bit that I've seen. It was, their hesitation was that the development would block the view of people outside of the development, and I've never seen the commission look at things that way.
We seem to be getting into areas that are not necessarily zoning parameter-driven and more of the, I hate to say the political sense of it, which is more what you as a council should do, but that's just my take on it, is we're getting past the true, is it zoned correctly or is it not? And I don't know what that is or why, but that's just, that's the interpretation I get of some of the things we've been seeing is that's more of what we're getting discussions about versus is it truly following setbacks, line zoning, is it correctly, you know, planned development is correctly changed, et cetera. And so that'll be a good discussion in general, I think, at the hearing as to what are we truly wanting to have the role of that organization be because I think they're getting on the ground that you as a council should be dealing in versus maybe that group initially.
Certainly got into that conversations with the KC rezoning and that type of thing, but at least, at least started out with the conversation being on properly zoned, and then we got into some of that soft stuff.
That's a good way to put it, the soft stuff. That's kind of where I think we're seeing some of this particular item too. But again, there'll be a good discussion about it, and it'll be a lot of information for you to consider as you go forward.
It's also in the same general areas we've, there's already been two other lots established out of green space, so.
At least one is very similar, yes.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Any other questions, discussion on setting the public hearing? Roll call vote, please.
Rafi.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Renkow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Motion carried six zero, one absent. Item 13, approving first reading, first reading of ordinance 1049 and ordinance adding section 104.4.14, keeping disorderly house to chapter 104, public offenses, and providing for an amendment to section 23.05, applicable chapters of the municipal infactions chapter of the Waverly Municipal Code. Entain a motion.
They would move the first reading of the ordinance 1049 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made second. Council discussion.
Yeah, it's, wow, this is about time we came up with something like this, I think. Question I have is, if we follow our normal process, will we be able to get this in place before college takes up this fall?
Yes, we should finish it in, first meeting in August. And I think this is a reaction to just giving another tool to our law enforcement. We don't have a major problem like Iowa City. When Iowa City does this kind of ordinance, they're controlling, you know, five or 600 potential homes, and we're not doing that. So we don't have the huge numbers, but it doesn't stop that from being a real disappointment and real problem for the people who live in that area. So instead of affecting hundreds of people, it affects 20s or 30s or 40s, but that's very important too. And so we want to make sure that we have one more remedy. The one I like about this one that Iowa City uses is that they can go after landlords when they need to. You know, we don't intend to do that right away, and if we have landlords that are trying also, then sometimes we're giving them assistance. We're really helping them with problem tenants. And we're really not trying to just tell them they have to solve the problem because we want to solve the problem. We want our officers to help solve the problem. We just want them to stop doing some of the things they're doing. And so I think if we can give one more tool that's in there, it'll help us with some of this types of, these types of behavior. And I think the neighbors have sort of had enough, so we need to help them.
Yeah, I know when I walked around that neighborhood, you know, Fifth Avenue, Northwest, South, that was the biggest complaint I heard during the campaign, was just people very frustrated, trying to be patient, but frustrated with some of the behaviors.
I have some concerns with this, frankly. And right now, I'm probably going to vote against it, not because I think it's not a good idea. I think it is a good idea and is something that needs to be moved forward, but I think that the way that this resolution is written, that the ordinance is going to be practically unenforceable. It's extremely broad. Some of the language in here could mean just about anything. And loud cars. In our neighborhood, there are people that are yelling in the parking lot of the liquor store all the time. So is this going to apply to commercial property? Is it going to apply to people driving down the street? Is it going to apply to people walking their dogs down the sidewalk and they're barking? I think that for this to really have some teeth, and I think that something has to be done that has some teeth and would have some real enforcement possibilities, we need to be very specific in what it is that we consider to be a nuisance or whatever the term is here. Use the right terminology here. A disorderly house, you know, what exactly is considered to be disorderly? How many times it has to be happening to be disorderly? I don't like the fact that the enforcement part is going to be done by the code enforcement officer. Someone's going to call him, the code enforcement person, at 3:00 in the morning and say, hey, there's a party going on across the street. Will you come out here and document it for me? Or, you know, there's people being loud, can you come out and document it for me? Or whatever's happening. I think there needs to be a much more established authority for how this is going to be enforced. It has to be given some thought about due process. You know, how are we going to provide notices? Who are the notices going to go to? How often are we going to provide notices? Is this totally under the discretion of whoever it is that's enforcing this? I think it's a good idea. I just don't think that it goes far enough in actually providing a resolution or an ordinance that has some teeth that we can go in there and clean some of these properties up. I understand the effort that we have to have one more tool, but I don't think this is a tool that's ever going to be used. I just don't see anyone actually going out and saying, well, let's enforce this by trying to slap a $750 fine on the landlord. Maybe an extremely egregious situation where, you know, this is going on dozens and dozens of times and the landlord is totally ignoring it, we can do this. But this is a problem that is a lot more subtle in that neighborhood, and this isn't just one or two properties. There are dozens of properties that are having issues. And I think what we need to do is have a much more focused ordinance that is very specific in what is a nuisance residence and what exactly is going to happen and how that's going to happen, what the procedures are for that to be done. I think if we have a much more focused ordinance, it's going to be much more enforceable and is going to have some teeth in it and is going to be much more helpful than just having a broad ordinance that says, well, we consider your property to be a nuisance or disorderly house, we're going to slap a fine on it. It's just way too broad. I just don't think it's ever going to be enforceable, and something that's not enforceable is probably worse than having nothing at all, frankly.
Iowa City has used this for several years very successfully. They haven't had any issue with not having described urinating in public or vomiting in the alleys or throwing trash on the lawns or loud music at all hours in the night, screaming and yelling, walking down the streets in groups from party to party, making a lot of noise. You know, you try to do general descriptions of what those things would be, and it's always up to the judge that hears the case as to whether it's defined as a loud, raucous, or disagreeable noise, that's a disturbance to the general public. We can't do every single thing that we've seen them do over the last five years and try to make a list of all of those violations. I think you have to use the judgment of the officers who are responding. I don't consider this to be a code enforcement officer situation. This is the police officer's tool. That, when it comes to the code enforcement on the civil sanction, that's one thrown in there, but I don't expect it to be used very often at all because it's generally not the landlords that are the problem. There are times when it is, but most of the time, it is not the landlords that are the problem. And if they find out about it, they're not very happy with it either because it probably means property destruction, use of their property in a way that they don't expect. No one's expecting it to be the magic, you know, solution to what's happening, but especially the simple misdemeanor section is it allows the officers to use another tool to try to arrest people if they have to, if they can't get them to get in order any other way. The second paragraph is a great tool to get them to disperse, to get people to leave the premises. You know, we've never done these big things where we basically surround a house and check every kid coming out of there that might be underage, and there's a lot of communities that do that. And that's one of the things that we've just told people to go home, and we still get minor possession, minor underage drinkers, whether it be college students or high school students. We're not doing as much of that because we're really just trying to get it quiet and get those people to go home. But it's not working that way because they're pretty much ignoring and going to the next house or the next block. And so, and this isn't a huge group of people, this isn't 80% of the Morteberg population that's doing something like this. This is a small group of people that aren't getting the message. And anything that we can use, at least that makes them, you know, if we arrest somebody, if we charge somebody with an infraction, that wakes people up. And I don't know how else to change people's behavior, but to make that simple misdemeanor something that we can use. And it's still a simple misdemeanor. It's not a huge crime, but it's really something that we've gotten to the point where after three or four or five years, it's just not working the way we're trying to do it. And this is our effort.
With all due respect, Bill, I disagree with you. I think this is the wrong tool. I think you need to use a scalpel and not a sledgehammer. This is a sledgehammer tool that's hardly ever going to be used. You need to have a scalpel that you're going to be able to use in situations that are not to the point where you have police surrounding the property. I mean, you need to, there need to be some situations where you identify properties that are a problem that are not to the problem where you have to declare it a disorderly house. I mean, that is, that is kind of at the point where it's at its worst, worst spot. And there needs to be some ways we can enforce civility, if we put it that way, in the neighborhood without relying on the sledgehammer. I just think it's the wrong approach. I think.
So when we've seen people from the neighborhood go to those houses and try to approach those people on a one-to-one basis, what we find them is to be, people to be rude with them, to be dismissive, disrespectful, obscenities, lots of things that they don't get the.
I don't disagree with you because I've been there myself multiple times, okay? I live right in the middle of that whole mess, and it is a mess. And it's not just students, it's a lot of other people and a lot of other things. What I am saying is that, yes, I agree there needs to be a tool. There needs to be something that can be done to take care of these properties. I'm just not convinced this is the tool. I don't think this does.
Cindy, would you have words you'd like to add to this discussion?
Thank you. My name is Cindy Campbell, and I am a business owner. I own Eckers Flowers and also live in the neighborhood that is heavily concentrated with this, and we've dealt with this for a while. I, for one, am pleased at the action from the mayor and the council and the administration and the start towards this. I don't think that there's going to be an action that's going to be the be-all, end-all all at once. I do believe that this will make a difference, and I also think the other thing it does, it will open the door for communication between the landlords, the renters, and the people in the neighborhoods who are affected, which is what we're hoping for. I'm not looking, and I don't believe any of the neighbors who in our area who have been affected by this are looking for any kind of aggression or altercation. We're looking for communication and a way to better communicate and become better neighbors. I think approaching it in a more gentle way, perhaps not with the teeth that you're expecting, but with a gentle way that says that we have had enough and these are the things that we would like to administer. And as far as documentation, believe me, the neighbors are certainly capable, like most of the rest of the nation, of getting out their cell phones, taking pictures and videos of things that are going on. And I do believe push has come to shove, and that is how the neighbors are feeling. At the same token, I also strongly believe that they are looking for a peaceful way in which to control a situation that has gone uncontrolled for a while. This pasture has been the absolute worst in all of the years that this has been going on, and it has been happening for a while. So I think that this is a good step and a way to start, and if it needs to be revised, if this finds that this is not going to have any effect, it will not make a difference, then we can revisit it. But I do, in reading the ordinance and seeing what is going to be administered here, I do think it is a positive step. Thank you.
I guess a couple of comments. One is, I get the sense by the conversation that some may think this is the first step in the process. For me, I see this as being the last step in the process. So hopefully the other things that we already have in place, just the drive-bys and the visiting with people, to me, again, so I'm hoping we are looking at this as the last thing. And the other is, my experience in my corner of the world of safety and security. And the other is my experience in my corner of the world of safety and security is the tighter you make the rules, the more specific you make the rules, the harder people work to find an exception that this doesn't apply to me. So I like this. I mean, to me, we can look at an animal waddling down the street and say, that's a duck. It just walked like one. It just quacked like one. But then when you get into the discussion, is that a mallard or is that a teal? That's where you start to lose the ability to really manage that discussion. So I can understand Rod's concern. We don't want to be heavy-handed. But to me, if we spend time trying to fine-tune this to cover every possible thing that makes it look like a duck and quack like a duck, it's going to be hard, more harder to apply it and get a successful outcome. To me, it needs to be general. We all know, if you talk to the common person, they'll tell you what a disorderly house acts like. And I think we can all agree on most of that. If you try to get too specific, that's when people find, well, that doesn't apply to me because of this exception. I'm very comfortable with this, knowing it's one of the last steps in the process and to find enough that we'll know if it's a duck or not.
Bill, in the case of Iowa City and the ordinance, they've got, what do we know about whether they have found it to be enforceable? Has it been a problem for them? That's the first half of my question. Do you want to hear both of them? The second half of the question is, has our local police department weighed in on the proposal? And would they feel comfortable with what we're talking about?
They have. And I think there was one simple change that Rich had suggested, but feels that this is a nice tool to have on the books. Again, it's not going to change the way the officers handle situations because we're not heavy-handed in this community. And they handle things with respect and they try to get accomplished what needs to get accomplished. You know, I think the civil sanction was more put in because they found that certain landlords were allowing overpopulation of their units, and that caused a lot of this problem to occur. So that was the kind of angle that we're going to use with regards to the civil sanction. It's really if landlords are allowing eight people to sleep in a, or to live in a two-bedroom house, that's where you get that kind of difficulties that come up. So I don't look at that probably going to happen very often at all. It's really more the failure to disperse and the order to disperse and some of those kinds of things that I think are going to be more valuable for the officers to use. It's not perfect. And I tried to pick one that has the best, probably the most experience in dealing with this kind of behavior and maybe in more extreme situations than us because I still remember being in school in Iowa City in the 80s. And it's not changed that much over the years. So we're hopeful that this basically just gives a tool. We were pretty moved by the group and by the people that brought the letters and the descriptions of what has occurred. And frankly, I didn't know it had gotten that bad this year. And that's one of those things that I was, I really felt like we needed to do something to have that tool to use, when we need to use it, or at least the threat of it. Maybe we don't ever use it.
The reason I asked about enforceability in Iowa City is, you know, if Rod has a point that it's not enforceable, I'm curious to know, have other communities found that?
Well, Iowa City, the reason I picked, I looked at what they had is because I Googled some of this stuff and found a really long article about what Iowa City had done, and they'd done this ordinance and they'd used this ordinance, and they found how successful it was for them to help curb some of this type of behavior. And, you know, I didn't call people down there. I looked at the language. I looked at what it said and how it was being used. And basically, the article recited that it was being used successfully and it had cut down some of that behavior. So, you know, you try to do the, you try to find the best tool you can. There's not a lot of people that have done a lot of this. You really have to go to the bigger cities that have bigger universities that deal with it on a bigger scale. That's why we picked, and it's fairly simple and straightforward, too.
I suppose I'd like to credit Bill for not trying to reinvent the wheel and trying to do it all himself, but finding existing solutions and trying to implement that here. One question I do have is it seems that all of the examples we're talking about involve Wartburg students. Have we contacted anyone at Wartburg College for their feedback? I'm thinking in particular, Dan Kittle, VP of Student Life, would be a good person to run this past.
We're working with Wartburg.
Okay.
That was my question, is what kind of dialogue is happening? And the question that also comes up for me is, it sounds like we have city laws on the books about public urination, disorderly conduct, public intoxication. Are they actually being enforced with this population?
There are. There are at times. I mean, you know, we still get, we get some of those kinds of charges. It's more of the, you know, you have a house full of loud people, and it's not always easy to get to that population if they're not going to open up or they're not going to let you in. And this is one of the things that this does.
Except when they're out in the yard or they're in the driveway.
Sure. But if they're in the house and making as much noise, and then they're coming and going, and you don't, I mean, you only see what's happening when they're coming and going. So it's just our, it's our effort to try to give a tool. And I go back to that. I want the officers to have the ability to do what they can do. And Paul's probably a good one to ask because he's the guy who does a lot of this at night.
Yeah, I'll try to help clarify just a little bit. Because I'm going on my 18th year here, and I've seen the ups and downs with the campus and other people as well. But the campus, I think, is where our discussion is lying right now. And each year, we can go through within the first probably month of school, and we know where the party houses are going to be that year. On a general night, when there's a big party gathering, usually by 11:00 or midnight, somebody in the neighborhood is going to call and allow disorderly conduct, call. What we do as officers is we go to the house and we say, get me a tenant now. And the tenant comes out, and we say, this is done. You guys need to shut it down. You're disturbing people's peace and quiet in this neighborhood. Party's over. And for the most part, they are very compliant. Leave your beers here. Get out of the house. Go about your way. Don't litter. Don't damage stuff on your way. We leave it at that. We generally don't have a problem with them not complying with that. They realize they're getting a warning and they're moving on. The problem that I have seen over the years is that we don't have any teeth right now because next week, we're going back to the same house. Or in a month, we're going back to the same house. Two months later, same house. So we're doing this over and over and over with the same people. I don't perceive us going in and to allow a party and getting the tenants out there and writing them citations for a disorderly house. I personally don't see that. That's not how the chief operates. I see us as letting them be grown-ups, giving them a warning, and this is done because you are becoming a nuisance to our neighbors. If we have to go back in another week or two weeks, to me, they've already been warned. Now it's time to start hitting their pocketbook a little bit. They realize this party might cost them $400 or $500 bucks. They're not going to continue to create the problems for our neighbors if they're realizing every time they throw a party. And with social media now, a party of 10 people grows into about 300 pretty darn quick. And people are just showing up out of the woodwork. We've actually had college kids flag us down and say, come into my house, kick these people out. This is not supposed to be happening. They don't want to get into trouble. And for the most part, all these students have been very respectful in that manner. But it doesn't fix the problem with our citizens. Because our citizens who have children, they work for a living, they want to get up in the morning, they just want to sleep. But yet, they've got to try to sleep 10 feet away from, I totally get this. I get the concern. I really wish I had a tool at my disposal that would be an enforcement thing that's not heavy-handed, but it stings. And they realize the next time they're going to throw a party, they're going to control this party and they're going to get it shut down before we're even called. So from that perspective, Mr. Dranko, I do agree with this. I like that enforcement tool. In the years, I have had contacted a number of property owners that I know personally that have party houses. And I would call them, and I'll just say, Joe, we've been over to this house three times. You need to get something done with this. And I've had great response from those that I happen to know in my sphere of influence to take care of it. I haven't really run across this end part of this code where we're going to start going after landlords and getting really heavy with them. But it's also a nice tool to have if we have landlords that are not being cooperative and helping curb the problems for the neighbors of their properties. So I guess to say all of this, in my years, this is not a problem that's going to go away. But I do like the aspect of our officers using that discretion and having the ability to let these students make grown-up decisions. And then if you're not going to make the right choices, there's going to be some enforcement action. And it's simply, I think the chief wanted to change it from a complaint, which would make us go arrest somebody out of the house in the middle of the night, haul them down to jail, take an officer off the street, to a simple citation that we can do in the squad car. It's done. It's over with, and exit the cars. So, yeah, this has been an issue I've watched during my career. And I personally, it's obviously up to you folks how things get worded, and so everybody's happy with it. But I like the aspect of having that tool at our disposal where we can maybe give them a warning and let the enforcement side take it.
I hear what you're saying, and I think that's an excellent approach. I think that's the right approach to take. Matter of fact, I always tell the Wartburg students that live around where we are, if they're going to have a party, the best way that they can prevent having any issues is to invite all the neighbors to their party. That, for some reason, that never happens.
Well, that's one of the things they'd say, well, we talked to every single neighbor and told them, well, yeah, that doesn't matter. If you're as loud. Some of these parties are just, well, and you know, and the rest of the folks, it's pretty horrendous. When you're dealing with 400 or 500 kids walking through town, beer cans, mailboxes getting kicked over, I mean, it's just a disrespect for the citizens. And then you victimize our people in town. And that's not a way we should be teaching our kids to be grown-ups, you know, as they get into the work world. I get it. It's college, and that's what our college kids do, and we were all there once. But sometimes it gets way out of hand, and I think that's what's creating a lot of this issue.
Well, let me sum up my thoughts on this, and then I'll be quiet because I know we need to vote and move on. From what I hear, what you're saying and what Bill is saying and a number of other people, you know, there are certain houses, certain properties, maybe certain landlords that maybe don't supervise the people that are living there as well as they should. And if that gets to be a problem, this would be a tool that we can use to encourage, strongly encourage that landlord to do a better job of keeping tabs on who they're renting their properties to. And I understand that. And I think that this would probably be helpful in that respect. However, there is also a broader problem of the noise and the beer cans and the, you know, the general disrespect of property and neighbors that this probably isn't going to address. And I think at some point, it would be a good thing for us to sit down, either as a council or maybe just myself and James and Bill, and maybe a couple of people from the neighborhood, and say, okay, what can we do to try to solve some of these problems? This would probably help in situations where we have landlords that simply don't care and have properties that are continually having issues, but it's really not going to address the overall, you know, issues in the neighborhood. I summed that up.
No, I think that's extremely fair. Nope, I think it's extremely fair. And I think it's something we can certainly look at and continue on. We really just want to get something on the books before college kicked in, as Dan had mentioned, to kind of help the neighbors get a sense of, we are going to try and do something about it. But yeah, I think there's items that are not going to be covered completely. I think if you ever get to this point, as Paul was talking about, you're not going to be surprised this is coming. It's not for lack of warnings and lack of attempts to try and make this nice. You get the DEFCON 5, or whatever you want to phrase this as, it's not going to go well. And you know this is coming because you've been warned multiple times. Because as you said, this is not their first need to want to go out and put a hammer to these people right away. They're patient. They continue. But at some point, you've got to have something else, and this will be that final, you shouldn't be surprised it's coming. So I hope that's the case, but I don't disagree at all. And I can call Iowa City, I want to talk to Bill and see just how effective has this been? I know a lot of my peers are very well, and we'll just see what it looks like for the next reading, if you approve this tonight. And we'll try and have a little more information on their success and what the problems or issues they've ran into, and see if we can kind of move this forward as well. So we'll certainly look into it.
I think it would be interesting to hear what do other towns our size do, like Decora?
Indianola.
Indianola. You know, do they have, do they have ordinances on the books? Are they used? Do they work? And I think having a meeting, like you said, might be a nice idea. I would recommend somebody from the college be there, maybe a landlord, right? Just a cross-section, but I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I'd kind of like to hear from some of the landlords when we have our next reading, seeing if they have any input on this.
And keep in mind, the landlords that we are looking at are the ones that don't live here and maybe have one house. And a lot of times, it's, that's, you know, somebody's long ways away.
Sometimes they're related to the people having the parties in the house.
So it's, they delegate to somebody else, and they don't know what happens. And so it's not really a landlord problem most of the time. And I don't want to say it, sound like it is, because it's only a few times that it's a landlord problem that refuses to take responsibility. And usually, it's because they let them over. In fact, they're making money off them by letting more people into the home than are allowed by our landlord-tenant code, which we're trying to crack down on that aspect of it, to be quite honest with you.
I think that's very important. I hear especially international students who are crammed into houses, so I think that's a very important piece of this.
So we don't inspect in Waverly ourselves, so we have to wait for complaints. And we don't get complaints from tenants who are paying cheap rent. And that's why they're doing it. So, you know, that's one of those drawbacks of not inspecting.
Well, in some sense, who I want to hear from are the landlords who are obeying the rules. How are they going to feel like this is cramping their style? Are they worried about this being a problem for them? Because as you say, we've got good landlords and, you know, not-so-good landlords. I wonder how those good landlords are going to respond to this. Are they going to be happy to see this kind of enforcement rule to apply to the not-so-good landlords? Or are they going to feel like this is cramping their, you know, an attack on them?
I mean, good landlords will tell you they don't want bad landlords renting houses to more people than they should. Because that means that they're going to lose people that they could be renting to. And that's what I'm trying to emphasize, is this is not really against landlords. It's just a few landlords and tenants that we have to help.
But I'd really like to kind of hear their input on this as well.
Sure, I would, too.
Bill, may I have a question?
Yep.
Prettaining to this, I haven't had a chance to talk to the chief yet specifically about this, but when Mr. Dranko was talking earlier, it made me think about, let's just throw out Rolling Meadows or Willow Estates or some of these other apartment complexes that we go to. And we may end up going back to an apartment over and over and over again for the same thing that's happening at a college house. So not just to pick on college kids, this is an issue other places, too, that is disturbing the peace. Is this going to bleed over to the same enforcement action we can then take in Number 20 in Rolling Meadows? Or you just pick a place?
Exactly.
Okay. So it's crossed the board?
It's not designed for students. It's designed for people who have loud parties and make disturbances.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah. The reason it came about is not necessarily what it could be used for. It's a citywide ordinance that can be enforced as needed.
And those happen with non-students, too, obviously.
That was one thing that I thought was, needed to point out. It's not, the discussion has been around Wartburg and the situations in Northwest Waverly. But it, part of an ordinance, it covers all of Waverly. So it, and this came about from meeting with President Coulson and James and Bill and Chief Purcell and some others, including myself, that President Coulson was absolutely unaware of all the things that happened. And so there's some changes going to be made in communications with, at the college level as the students come in, along with what we're trying to do. So it's citywide, it's citywide ordinance, not just directed at Wartburg. So, okay. Any other discussion at this point?
Said I wasn't going to say anything, but I want to say one more thing. And that is, I don't want to make it sound like I'm that old Creme Dujin who's telling you kids, get off my lawn. I mean, I love having the students around. They add a real vitality. They add a real vitality to the neighborhood. They're, in general, very respectful. They're great to talk to. I mean, it's fantastic having them around, you know. And even occasionally, they'll have the party that maybe gets out of hand, and I understand that because we were all young too, so I don't have a problem with that. But, you know, there are some situations where, you know...
They're not so fun.
It's not, it gets to the point where it's no longer just being students, it's getting to be, you know, just a, an issue that needs to be taken care of beyond that. So I love the students, glad they're here.
We can put that "keep off the lawn" thing in here so you don't have to... Put that right in there, it slips right in.
Okay, any other last comments? Roll call vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Motion carried 6001 absent. Item 14, approving first reading of ordinance 1050, an ordinance providing for rezoning a property owned by the city located along 15th Street Northwest and 16th Street Northwest by 3rd Avenue Northwest, from R3 multifamily residential 2 to 4 units to R4 multifamily residential apartments, 5-plus units, and setting a public hearing. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the first reading of ordinance 1050. Ordinance providing for rezoning of property owned by the city located along 15th Street Northwest and 16th Street Northwest by 3rd Avenue Northwest from R3 multifamily residential 2 to 4 units to R4 multifamily residential apartments, 5-plus units, and setting July 16, 2018 at 7:00 PM in City Council Chambers of City Hall, as the date, time, and place for a public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion?
I assume this is just bringing the zoning up to match what is currently there.
Yeah, that's the simple part for Waverly Manor and Waverly Homes. Those are the two big parcels. That's just making them conform to the R4. Parcel, let's see, parcel four, that's one and two. Parcels one and two is the LG, the old LZ Phoenix House that's going to be taken down and a new building put up. We'll be having a public hearing in August, as required by the state law on low-income housing. We have to let the public know that we're going to commence a project and move forward into that stage. So we have to, but we have, in order to do that, we have to rezone this from R3 to R4 because it will qualify as an R4 use. The Waverly Utility Parcel is actually owned by the city of Waverly. I just called it that. It's a little triangle that they used to use for something. That's just going to be part of that lot, so it's going to be combined together, so those two pieces. So that will be one project, and you'll get a lot more information on that project when it comes through on the... I think we didn't have, we didn't have anything this time. But we will have a site plan that will come through at some point on that parcel.
Any other discussion, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Motion carried 6001 absent. Approving setting a public hearing on a new housing project for the Waverly Municipal Housing Commission pursuant to Iowa Code Section 403A.28.
I move approve setting a public hearing on a new housing project for the Waverly Municipal Housing Commission pursuant to Iowa Code Section 403A.28 for August 6, 2018 at 7:00 PM in the Council Chambers at City Hall.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. This is what you were referring to, Bill.
And there'll be more details about the project on that at that time.
Roll call vote, please. No, I'm sorry. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed? Motion carried 6001 absent. Approving third and final reading of ordinance 1047, an ordinance amending Section 105.3.01, speed restrictions of the Waverly Municipal Code. Motion, please.
I'll move approval of the third and final reading of ordinance 1047, an ordinance amending Section 105.3.01, speed restrictions of the Waverly Municipal Code.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Motion carried 6001 absent. Next item is approval of a mayororal appointment. I'd like to have you approve Crystal Harms for the Economic Development Commission for a term ending July 2021. She's replacing Rebecca Smith, who chose not to be reappointed. Crystal is the owner of Pink Daisy on East Bremer. She's also a Realtor for Iowa Realty, so she has quite a background.
I would move the mayororal appointment.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Crystal is appointed by a vote of 6001 absent. Reports from boards and commission, economic commission minutes, April 10, 2018, received into record. Historic preservation commission minutes from April 23, 2018, received into record. Planning and zoning commission minutes, May 3, 2018, received. Board of Adjustment commission minutes, May 14, 2018. Airport commission minutes, May 17, 2018, received. Staff comments?
Looks like we do, sir.
Hey there.
Appears to be. Tab is back.
If you recall, last Monday, we had a pretty good lightning storm, and we had a casualty. This is the large cottonwood tree in Coleman Park. We've had a couple of my hort people look at it, and they think it's probably got less of a lifespan now than it had before. I'm going to have a friend of mine, who's a city forester at Waterloo, he's looked at some things for us before, come up and look at it. He's got a forestry degree and knows everything there is about trees, just to confirm. But we're thinking it'll probably have to be removed here next year or so. I just wanted to let you know because this is an icon of the community.
Tab, I have to say something because of this picture, and my son has pointed this out to me. If you look at the lamp post in the lower-left corner, the glass globe on top is tilted. And he has pointed that out to me, and I...
We have photographic proof of that now. Okay, we'll look at that, thank you.
How about the tree in the south park, south of the fire station? I don't know if that got hit by lightning or just broken half.
It is, people pulling that out to us, it's been that way for about a year. It really isn't hurting anything, and we will take care of that when we have time.
You're going to have to take the whole tree down?
The one that's broken half that's laying there? Yeah, we'll probably take it down. Again, it's not in an area where there's people or anything like that, we may get away with just cutting the broken part off. But that's kind of a low priority with us.
Okay, any other staff comments?
Yes, sir. Carl has a few things, sir.
I believe I emailed all of mayor and council regarding the citizen input form that was suggested to us by our insurance carrier. Just wanted to make it known to the public that it's out there, it's on our website. If you go to waverlyia.com and go to city information, and then under city administrator and staff, there is a link that you can click on for citizen input form. On there, there's two ways to submit it. There's unlink to a fillable PDF, and then you can print that off and email it to either myself or Valerie. Or there's an actual fill-in-the-blank form that you just click submit, and it comes right to us. So either way is acceptable. It's a good way for us to track items that citizens have input on, and also to show how those items were followed up on. So we would encourage everyone to utilize that form. And then, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Is the intent for it to be complaints? Is it ideas for improvement? Is it...
All the above.
Okay.
I thought if we called it a complaint form, that's all it would be. So we want it to just be citizen input instead for, got to figure some positive stuff that might come out of that, instead of just a complaint.
That's what I'm hoping, that folks will take the opportunity to give positive feedback as well as maybe things that need to be addressed.
Absolutely.
Some good ideas come out of folks when you sit down and talk to them and give them a chance to provide their input.
Absolutely.
So when people contact us, do you want us to direct them to fill out a form, or do you want us to fill out the form that they contacted us?
I would, I think it would be appropriate for you to just direct them to fill out the form. And if they don't hear any response, or, you know, we'll have that form, and it should say, "Well, we got this on this date." It's a way for you to hold the city staff accountable as well.
Who does the form go to?
Well, it gets emailed to Valerie and myself. And then from there, we would distribute it to the appropriate person or department. And James, of course, would get a copy.
So if people don't have internet access, they can, can they come down and just fill out a hard copy here?
Absolutely. Any more questions on that?
Any other staff comments?
Okay, I still have one more thing, sorry. And then also, I believe last week, we were asked to put the three-lane versus four-lane documentation that we had on the agenda on the webpage, and it is under... So if you go just to the homepage on that, you'll see the tree and everything. Right there, it says like Bremer Avenue Project, and then there's a learn more button. If you click on that learn more button, you'll see three little blue boxes, and what we added to it is on the right-hand blue button on that side. Just want to communicate that to all of you and to the public.
Is that the stuff that was presented at the meeting last time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I think that's all we have, sir.
Okay. Council comments?
Quick question for either James or Bill, or both maybe. We've had at least two items on the agenda tonight that deal with zoning. I'm curious to know, who's handling zoning in the city right now? And are we planning to replace... Your hand went up.
Actually, Paige is.
Are we expecting to replace Ben's position in time?
We have a candidate that has accepted our offer, and the candidate will start at the end of July. In the meantime, Paige is helping me do the work we need to do with permits and those kinds of questions and things.
Thank you.
Two real quick things. I keep getting questions from the public. The rumor mill has it that 8th Street Northeast-Southeast intersection is going to be closing soon.
It is closed.
It is closed?
Yes.
You can't go north on 8th?
Okay. So how do people now get to the businesses on 1st Street? Do they have to go south and 1st Avenue to come all the way around, or...
The only access north of Bremer is to go on 1st Street Northeast, or go all the way out to 12th and go all the way around Ry Point. And on the south, they can use 9th. We don't want trucks, big trucks doing that, but it would also be 1st Southeast.
And then, the other question of the week is, now that the Green Bridge and then the historical...
National Historic, National Registry of Historical Places.
Does that mean we can't remove it?
No.
I understand, we can still do anything we need to do with it or want to do with it, this is just to preserve the...
That just means there's a record of it. So now we have a number in the big, long list of all the national historic places, we are in the registry. So we can say that this bridge did exist someday. When there's no record or no trace of the bridge left, there still is a record that it existed.
It put panic in some people that now we're back to fixing the old bridge at $1 million or whatever.
Been properly documented into history, and that's as far as it goes, it can still be dealt with accordingly.
Kind of like the fuel tank in the alley. Been documented now.
There should have been a little more documentation when it went in.
Okay, any other council comments, questions?
I, let's see, want to remind people that there is no garbage pickup on Wednesday. And is it just Wednesday, or is there another day? I guess, so if your garbage is only picked up on Wednesday, it'll be picked up on Thursday. So just kind of be aware of that. And those of you who need to pay your utility bills because your auto pay isn't working this month, I went up to Waverly Utilities, and they were open earlier than I was expecting, like 8:30, they were already open. And there was the mailbox outside, but I was actually able to go into the office and hand it to a smiling person behind the desk. So make sure you pay your bills.
Any other?
Tabby Ford.
Absolutely.
I just have a couple of quick things. One is a reminder that the drop box that was in the alley out here is now at the front entry of City Hall, Civic Center. It's not for paying utility bills, it's for all the other things that need to be done, dropping off keys or some other information. Shane moved that early this morning, and there were already, excuse me, there were already people that were perturbed because they couldn't pay the utility bills there this morning. The other one is, and Tim alluded to it, 4th of July, enjoy the 4th. If you're going to use fireworks, please follow the rules, be cognit or considerate of your neighbors, and pick up, kind of pick up the trash and everything, but hopefully the weather will cooperate and everyone will have a good time. With that in mind, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Do we adjourn?
Second.
Those in favor say yes?
Yes.
We are adjourned.